Good evening, 6:00 PM on December 12th, 2018. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Next, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. So next, if we can all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have an announcement to make. At this point, the zoning board is going into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy with respect to the pending case of Emeluth Trustee versus ZBA, Constable Superior Court, Civil Action Number BACV-2013-00579. Next, we'll be clearing the room and silencing all of the audio for probably 10 to 15 minutes. But it's really hard to tell, we don't know how long the discussion will take with town council. We'd like to caution everybody really not to leave the area because, again, we don't know how long it will take. And if you're early on the agenda, you can never tell, again, how long this executive session will last. We're going to post signs outside and close the doors. And when the session's over, we'll come out, remove the signs, and invite everybody back in to resume the regularly scheduled ZBA meeting for tonight. So Bill, would you make a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I make a motion that we adjourn into executive session.
Do we have a second? Okay. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 You've got to call their names.
Okay. Sharon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so if we could all clear the room, hang tight.
So she said to hit the red button.[161.62]
So I'm gonna take that stick that label off.
Yeah, Marion.
Oh, Marion's doing those. I didn't realize you had them both doors. Where do you drive down from? How far do you drive?
Poppyton.
Poppyton? It's an hour, well over an hour.
Hour and ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all four ninety-five.
Further, like, 'cause I'm right off four ninety-five.
Yeah.
When I first moved out there, I'm actually from Boston, but I moved further, further out. The first time I had to be at court down here, I was twenty minutes early.
Could you just assume it's all four?
My mom's in Sandwich, so I used to live. Write, write one roll over for Bob Sherman, remember your old.
Oh, yes, yes, I like Bob.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
I like Bob. Bob is a good guy.
Yeah, he is.
No, but it's all four ninety-five, so if it's not a Friday or Saturday in the summer, or a Sunday in the summer going home, then it's all good.
Yeah, we were down here a lot this summer, and I only had one day that took a couple hours to get back. But for the most part, hour and a half.
And my wife works per diem at, at, at the Brigham. So she, she, so she tries in the summer not to work weekends, so she doesn't have to. She works nights, she works seven to seven. And she just, she drives home seven in the morning, but if it's a, if it's a Saturday morning, it can be brutal.
Oh, forget it, yeah.
So she, she kind of picks those days not to work. Oh, he's not coming in anyway.
No, they're not coming back.
It's on anyway.
We gotta do the public comment.
Is Mike, is he coming back in?
Um, I don't know where Mike is. He might have went down to his office.
No, he's just outside.
Oh, he'll, I'm sure, wander in. I don't know if we need him right away.
Maybe he went back to his office, so he doesn't know that we're here.
Well, no, I saw him. I asked him to grab the sign.
Do we need him right now, or? I'm sure he'll wander back in. Gonna ask, oh, they're not out there, I was gonna say, have one of these guys go get him. You want me to go?
No, go get him.
I can go get him.
I'm just waiting.
My cousins have a plant in Livermore Falls. They stopped doing lumber, and they have a pallet plant.
Yeah.
And it's virtually completely automated.
Who do they sell, most of the paper mills? Who do they sell the pallets?
Uh, they sell everywhere. My, uh, my uncles would sell to GE.
Not really.
IBM, oh, yeah. And, um, yeah, my cousin, my uncle started before the war, when we were all drafted, then restarted after the war. I used to go.
Oh, yeah, Livermore Turner, Livermore Jay, just got to the right road.
All right, thanks for your patience. Uh, we'll now resume the open session ZBA meeting for tonight. And, okay, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not relating to any agenda items tonight? If so, you can sign in right now, and you can have three minutes to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, Ron Bonvey and Bill Blaisdell have recused themselves from the first three hearings. So sitting on tonight's first three hearings, three regular board members, as well as Brad and Sharon. Okay, before we start, I'd like to set a few ground rules. Many people in attendance tonight probably would like to speak regarding one of tonight's hearings. We'll be taking public comments after the presentation and discussion on each hearing. At the appropriate time, I'll ask for comments, and at that time, please raise your hand. And when acknowledged, you can come forward to the microphone, give your name and address, and you can have your say. Because of the large crowd, I'd like to limit everyone to just three minutes. So Sharon, would you please read our first three continued hearings? We're gonna listen to, uh, the presentations for all of them, and then we'll vote separately. New hearings, excuse me. Go ahead.
Gooseberry Island in Punk, Punkhorn Point Road. Owner Gooseberry Island Trust and SN Trust request a variance from one seventy-four dash twelve of the zoning bylaws required frontage on a street in direct access to a paved town, county, or state road, or street as defined in said section in order to construct a single-family residence on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one hundred, parcel six zero R, Mashpee, Mass. Gooseberry Island and Punkhorn Point Road. Owners Gooseberry Island Trust and SN Trust request a variance from one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws requiring one hundred fifty feet of frontage on a street in order to construct a single-family residence on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one hundred, parcel six zero R, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Gooseberry Island and Punkpoint Point Road. Owner Gooseberry Island Trust and SN Trust request a variance from one seventy-four dash thirty-two of the zoning bylaws requiring fire department apparatus access as defined in said section to allow for the construction of a single-family residence on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one hundred, parcel six zero R, Mashpee, Mass. One must be mine. Now, we share anything?
Just a little confusion here. We got four maps here, sightplans. Two say July two thousand eighteen, two say March two thousand fourteen. Take the fourteens and throw them out, and. All right, so you got eighteen. This is an eighteen. You have fourteen? So if that's fourteen, Brad, fold it up. Don't even use it.
This is fourteen.
If it says fourteen, don't use it.
Yeah, he's a well fourteen.
Yeah, this one's, you guys have eighteen, we have an eighteen.
Here we go.
Who's that fourteen?
Right here.
Sorry for the confusion. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian Hall, and it's room, I have an office in Sandwich, and I'm here tonight representing the petitioners, the Gooseberry Island Trust and the SN Trust. And with me is Tom Bunker from BSS Design, and also Matthew Haney, who's a representative of the trusts. Um, and I'll address, uh, why there's two plans in my presentation. The eighteen plan is up on the easel, and if I can just point with this laser pointer, Gooseberry Island Trust.
Is that say eighteen or fourteen? I'm sorry.
That's a fourteen.
Because that, what I'm seeing is, the one that has fourteen has the bridge. These eighteens don't have the bridge, it's just the island.
It's the fourteen that I wanna go with. It's the one with the bridge. Sorry.
Tell him back. So then I'll be on the same page. No pun intended. All right, we're back.
Okay, so Gooseberry Island Trust owns this body of land, which is known as Gooseberry Island. It's a three-point-nine acre island in Pompano City Bay. And it's separated from the mainland by a channel that is about eighty feet wide at high tide and about forty feet wide at low tide. And the SN Trust owns a strip of land right along the edge of the mainland. And the proposal, uh, or I should say the intention of my clients is to, one day, develop a single-family home on the island. And in order to get there, they're proposing this bridge to be built from the end of Punkhorn Point Road across the channel to the island. So in order to render the island eligible for a building permit, the trusts, the two trusts, need three variances. And they were listed in the public notice, and I'll just briefly say which one they are. Section one seventy-four dash twelve of your bylaw requires that buildings be on lots that front upon a street. And obviously, the island has no street. Uh, section one seventy-four thirty-one requires one hundred and fifty feet of frontage on a street. And one seventy-four dash thirty-two requires property to have an unobstructed paved access roadway within one hundred and fifty feet of the furthest point of any building on the property. And the purpose of that is to provide access for first responders, ambulances, fire, fire trucks, and police. So, to the other plan, by way of background, the trust applied for these same three variances back in two thousand and thirteen, but no bridge was proposed. The applicants at that time were proposing to access the property by boat and be what's a so-called off-the-grid type of house. During the hearings, the board expressed concerns with the inability for first responders to access the property. They were concerned about public safety, they were concerned about fire protection, they were concerned about people being on the island and having a medical emergency and not being able to be accessed. So the board denied the request for variances for those three reasons. We're back here before you, seeking the same three variances, but now with the bridge being proposed, we believe that we've addressed the reasons for denial the first time around. Because obviously, with the bridge, there's now going to be pedestrian and vehicular access to the island. The bridge is going to be a single lane, it will be wide enough for fire trucks and ambulances. And there's a comment in the record from the fire chief that said that as long as the bridge is built and certified by a structural engineer, that his heaviest piece of apparatus can get across the bridge, that that was his concern. And when this bridge, if it ever is built, hopefully, it will be certified with construction drawings by a structural engineer, uh, so that the fire chief will be satisfied with those concerns. That's basically the project. So the board is very familiar with its authority to grant variances. And the board can grant variances if, if three conditions obtain. The first is that due to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land, especially affecting the land but not generally affecting the zoning district, apply. And if a literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, and if the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without derogating from the intent of the bylaw. Well, the applicant believes that it has a hardship because it's an island. And so it has shape, topography, and soil conditions, namely the fact that it's completely surrounded by water. That is unique to the land, it does not generally affect the residential district. Secondly, the trust believe that literal enforcement of the bylaw will involve a substantial hardship. If the relief from these frontage requirements and access requirements is not granted, the lot cannot, the island cannot be developed, and in which case, there would be substantial financial hardship to the property owner. Third, and this was the basis for the denial back in two thousand and thirteen, can the relief be granted without substantially derogating from the purposes of the bylaw? The first two requests for relief concern frontage. And the case law regarding frontage and why bylaws require frontage is to make sure that every lot has access to a street, so again, that first responders, mailmen, people can access the property. The first time around, there was no bridge, and the board felt that that, that granting the relief under those circumstances would in fact derogate from the bylaw. The proposal for the bridge specifically addresses these concerns because although there's no frontage on a street, the bridge will provide the access that the board was concerned with, and that what frontage is actually concerned with. The third variance has to do with access by fire apparatus, and it requires the property to be within a hundred and fifty feet of a road. Again, the bridge addresses this concern, and in the materials that I submitted to the board, I actually found three different variances that, uh, from that provision of your bylaw on Punkhorn Point Road, because Punkhorn, Punkhorn Point Road itself is, is not a standard-sized road. But this board has granted relief, four houses on that road. And we're essentially taking the position that the bridge is just another minor extension of the road, and it provides adequate access for, for fire vehicles. That's our presentation. We think that the board is, would be well within its authority to grant the requested relief, and we ask that you do.
Uh, right off the bat, I know there's litigation regarding who owns the land on the mainland side.
Yes.
Is that still a discussion point?
It's been through trial, and my.
What does it stand?
It's under advisement with the judge. So the way that things work in the land court, I don't represent the client in the case, but I'm aware of its status. It was tried to a judge in the land court, and the judge sits in the land court without a jury. And then when the trial is over, the judge takes the matter under advisement. It's my understanding that briefs were submitted to the court back in January of this year, and we're waiting for the decision.
So really, nothing's changed regarding the ownership on the mainland side?
Well, it has not been adjudicated, but clearly, you know, my client claims.
So you don't necessarily own it, I, I should say, the, what is it, SNN, you said?
SN Trust.
SN Trust doesn't necessarily own that land, is that correct?
No, my, my client has a deed to the property. That deed has been challenged by abutters. It's gone to trial, and the judge is going to make a decision as to who owns the land.
Okay.
But I would submit to you that clearly, if it had to go to trial, my client has a claim to that land. He asserts he, he owns it, and that's sufficient for this board to act.
Okay, I believe there are other clients that claim the exact same thing. Is that true?
Well, they don't claim the land, but they, they dispute my client's claim to the land. And one of the lawyers that tried the case is here for the, uh, abutters, I'm sure that.
Well, we're gonna hear from everybody in.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I've tried the case as well for the town of Mashpee.
Sorry, Kate, I apologize. I, I did not try it, I was not there, so I, my faux pas.
Anything you'd like to say on that?
Uh, no, just that, that there's no, the judge has not issued a decision, although he told me when I saw him, um, when I was before him for another matter, that it would be coming soon, but that was probably two months ago at this point. So the, the ownership issue is still in question. We, the town claims a portion of it. We took a less active role, but also the abutters, two of the abutters on that road took an active role in claiming ownership, and we're still waiting for a decision, so it's not, it's not conclusive that SN Trust or anybody else owns any specific portion of that property. And there's another case pending that you may wanna ask about, because the bridge that you've spoken of, there's no approval yet for the bridge, and we're still waiting for a court decision on that as well.
Right, that's also under litigation. So the, the, the bridge, um, has been through the DEP adjudicatory hearing process, and, uh, it's currently under appeal in the Superior Court.
Well, that was, that was my next question. Isn't the lot, the island being buildable and the bridge, isn't it like two separate approvals?
Well, our.
Yeah, well, conservation is the one I believe that's.
You need, you need both, but you can't approve this as a buildable lot without the bridge. But wouldn't you need to get the bridge approved before you can? I mean, I'm just asking, because I don't know how you can, without a bridge, and the bridge isn't approved.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that was one of the bases for denial of these three variances previously. So that's why the applicant went and applied for permission from the Conservation Commission to build in a sensitive wetland resource area. And the commission denied it, it was appealed, the applicant appealed it to DEP, lost at DEP, appealed it to Superior Court. So there's, there's still no bridge. And that's one of the requirements under your bylaw, is that there be access to, if there's no frontage, I mean, th- these are correctly worded, the requirements for these various variances, but if there's no frontage, there has to be access some other way for emergency vehicles and otherwise. And that doesn't exist yet because that case is still pending as well.
Okay, so the bridge isn't approved by conservation, that's in litigation. The land on the mainland side is up for discussion. So really, nothing's changed.
As one board member, I could never approve the bridge, 'cause it hasn't been approved by other departments.
Right.
With, with, with all due respect to that, every board has its own jurisdiction. And so the proposal before you presupposes that the bridge is part of the project. And so you, my, my position is you can act on the request for relief, conditioning it upon the bridge being built.
Okay. I'm not really comfortable on that, but. That's just a personal opinion.
If we propose a bridge, and the appeal does not work out to my client's benefit, then this permit would be no good, because we couldn't build the bridge. So the proposal is with the bridge.
All right. Any questions before we read some comments in from different departments? Any questions? Comments?
A lot of, there's some stuff to read in.
All right. You wanna do conservation?
I will do health, 'cause it's in front of me.
All right.
Uh, Board of Health comments, "The protection of the utilities, especially gas and electric, is a paramount as they will be exposed under the bridge. The final capacity of the bridge will dictate the types and weights of other vehicles allowed to access the property, i.e. construction and maintenance." That's Board of Health.
Okay, I'll read, uh, conservation. "The proposed bridge to Gooseberry Island is still in appeal at the state level, to my knowledge. Conservation Department has not received any final determination from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection regarding the status of this appeal. The owners of Gooseberry Island have not submitted any permit applications to the Conservation Department for development on Gooseberry Island aside from the aforementioned bridge proposal. The most recent permit issued by the Conservation Commission for Gooseberry Island has an order of resource area delineation, ORAD, under an abbreviated notice of resource area."
Delineation.
Yep. Uh, "This ORAD is currently under appeal process through the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, and no determination has been made at this point."
Building Department.
There's a bunch.
Yeah. Gooseberry Island and Punkpoint, Point Road. "The area is R-three and is in a pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as high. The application is seeking a variance from one seventy-four dash twelve of the zoning bylaws for the prerequisite of requiring frontage on a street in direct access to a paved town, county, or state road, or street as defined in said section in order to construct a single-family residence. Please note that depending on where the single-family home is located, or is, is to be placed, there are various flood zones present from AE eleven and AE fourteen flood zone. This means that any single-family home built in those areas shall be required to be constructed in accordance with, with all FEMA regulations. Gooseberry Island and Punkhorn Point Road. "The area is zoned R-three and is in pre-contact archaeological sensitivity area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a variance under one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws requiring a one hundred and fifty feet of frontage on a street in order to construct a single-family residence. Please note that depending on where the single-family home is to be placed, there are various flood zones present from AE eleven and AE fourteen flood zones. This means that any single-family home built in those areas shall be required to be constructed in accordance with all FEMA regulations. Gooseberry Island and Punkhorn Point Road. "The area is zoned R-three and is in a pre-contact archaeologically sensitive areas listed as high. The applicant is seeking a variance from one seventy-four dash thirty-two of the zoning bylaws requiring fire department apparatus access as defined in said section to allow for construction of a single-family residence. Note that depending on where the single-family home is to be placed, there are various flood zones present from AE eleven and AE fourteen flood zone. This means that any single-family home built in those areas shall be required to be constructed in accordance with all FEMA regulations. Sincerely, Michael Mendoza, Building Division."
Okay, last one I have is from the acting harbor master, John J. Santangelo. "Miriam, I have no comments regarding, uh, the, any ZBA agenda items scheduled for Wednesday, December twelfth." Any final comments before we go to people in the audience? Any questions? Okay, anybody in the audience? Yeah. Come right up if you would.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. George Chucky Green, Director of Natural Resources for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe has issues with this project going forward, and I have been instructed to convey them to this board. "The tribe strenuously opposes the granting of variance by the zoning office, the Office of Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA. The tribe opposes the granting of these variances by the ZBA for the following reasons. Granting this variances would violate the two thousand and eight intergovernmental agreement between the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe and the Town of Mashpee, as it would negatively impact Punkhorn Point and Gooseberry Island, which lands a subject to the IGA. Um, in the second half of the IGA, it is written right in that A and B, which are those areas, were written right into the IGA, and if a copy is needed, I have from the IGA. "The tribe is the holder of shellfish grant license surrounding Gooseberry Island. Granting a variance would violate the tribe's shellfish grant license. We have a license that extends now, that was just in two thousand and fifteen extended, and it would go for another nine years. So, any activity out there that could possibly interfere with that, like for instance, a septic system, south side of the island is on a, it's almost never closed. The north side of the island is on a partial closure from Division of Marine Fisheries because of fecal contamination. So if we put, uh, single-family dwelling, and there is an incident, storm, or whichever, because the island is heavily impacted by the storms that we have gotten in the last five years, that would put at risk the tribe's shellfish grants. From time immemorial, the tribe and its members have fished, harvested, carried out other shellfishing and agriculture activities while exercising their Aboriginal rights. Granting the variance would prohibit the tribe and its tribal members from exercising their Aboriginal rights in contravention to the federal and state law. Granting of a variance would open doors to development that would destroy protected natural resources in the area. The same variances were requested in two thousand and thirteen, and those requests were denied by the ZBA because there was no access for emergency vehicles or personnel to Gooseberry Island. The situation remains the same today, as there are no greater access for emergency vehicles or personnel on the island. Granting variances therefore would pose a safety risk to the public and emergency personnel. Furthermore, the issue is now in litigation. ZBA denied the same variances in two thousand and thirteen because ownership, in doubt, not proven to be by the applicant. The applicant's intent to build a bridge is well-known and would require, at a minimum, ownership of certain lands. Ownership of that land is currently in litigation. Further, if the bridge were built, when the applicant initially started the effort to build the bridge, there is documentation from two thousand and fifteen of a storm showing such a bridge would have been destroyed or inundated, where the island would have been inaccessible, or there would have been a possibility of damage or impairment to the tribe's shellfish grant. Um, I'm the Director of Natural Resources. I can document the height, the water heights, and I have compared them to the bridge heights that were proposed. And I heard a comment a little while ago about the utilities. Well, think about those utilities underwater. There'll be a number of local state laws violated where a bridge built. There'll be a number of local state laws violated where a bridge built to Gooseberry Island. These issues are currently in litigation. Granting a variance would intended for extraordinary reasons. There is no basis to grant such an extraordinary exception. They talk about the hardships and such, but as we all know, the island was unbuildable when they decided to purchase. Any questions?
I do. Sure. Does the bridge construction affect your shellfish grants?
Yes. Our shellfish grants run, our shellfish grant runs right through that channel where the bridge would be. The height of the bridge would also impact our ability to go from one side of the bridge to the other side of the bridge.
Concerned about that. I know it's a DEP conservation thing, but I was wondering how that bridge would affect the travel on the waterway.
Well, it eliminates travel on the waterway because of the height of the bridge.
Yeah, I was curious on that.
The Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe has not placed trays or agricultural gear in that channel simply because it would interfere with the boat traffic. Bill McKay likes to take his nice antique boat through there so he doesn't have to deal with the outside-of-the-island channel traffic.
Yeah, I know, that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction.
No, that's chapter 91, that's somewhere else.
I know, I know it's a DEP thing and a conservation, but it's, what was one of my concerns on that. I just wanted to know how it affected the shellfish grants, so, thank you.
Our concerns will be more with wave actions and storm damage, whereas the impacts of a structure being there might change the directions of the waters and interfere with our agriculture project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How deep is the channel where the proposed bridge is going?
How deep is the channel?
Yeah, with that.
At high tide or low tide?
High tide. Well, give me both.
Okay. At dead-low tide, an extreme-low tide, is probably about foot and a half, two feet.
Okay.
That's an extreme-low tide. High tide, a mean-high tide, it's about five and a half, six feet.
Is the Army Department of Engineers?
Army Corps of Engineers.
Have they had anything to say about this?
I have not heard any comments from Army Corps.
Would they come to the jurisdiction, just out of curiosity?
It will when it gets to chapter 91. That's just another phase down the road.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have the, I want to hear actually from the Fire Chief. Thank you.
Tom Rulo, Fire Chief Mashpee. I think you pretty much have my letter that I gave, maybe you don't.
I actually don't.
No, I have it right here.
Okay. Why don't we read it in?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Josh.
All right, that's from the Town of Mashpee Fire and Rescue Department, dated August 17th, 2018, from Fire Chief Thomas C. Rulo to Matthew Haney. Reference: Gooseberry Island Bridge. "Mr. Haney, per our conversation and multiple emails, I want to respond to your request for a letter of acceptance. I appreciate your interest in providing a, providing a bridge to Gooseberry Island, which will accommodate Mashpee Fire and Rescue Department's apparatus as required by 527 CMR 1.00. To summarize, I need the bridge architectural plans to be stamped by a certified engineer in good standing of the state of Massachusetts, which will carry the weight and the width of my widest apparatus, excuse me, heaviest apparatus. This bridge, as you outlined, will be similar to the Pompaneset Island Bridge, which currently accommodates the department's heaviest apparatus. Have any questions, please call the Mashpee Fire Department at 508-539-1454. Very truly yours, Thomas C. Rulo, Fire Chief."
So, just summarizing, so, Mr. Haney had called me and asked me about that. He sent me a couple of drawings of the bridge, and I had conversations with Charlie Raleigh, which I do pretty much for the town for anything that I need. And Charlie had noted quite a few things in here, but basically, from my edification, that's what I would need for a bridge to be able to access the property.
Okay.
So he has questions for me.
Yeah, I have one question, and the same question I actually asked five years ago, I think you answered. Let me paint the scenario. Let's say it's middle of February. There's a house out there. There's no bridge. And there's an emergency call. Somebody has a heart attack. How are you going to be able to respond to that?
I don't have a, I don't have a method to get across the waterway. I don't have a method to get there at all, so I wouldn't be able to get there, no. Wouldn't be able to handle any crisis. It doesn't matter if it's a fire or medical.
So that would put quite a potential strain if the town was not able to act to one of their citizens on an emergency call. I'm guessing there'd be some sort of an issue with that legally, not being able to respond.
If there's no bridge.
Correct. And right now, if we don't have clear ownership title, number one, we certainly don't have clear ability by conservation to allow that bridge to be built. Okay.
Would you also need, where it's a bridge and it's like a one-way road? When your apparatus gets on the island, you'd have to have the ability to turn around.
So, that's correct. So, I was only asked about the bridge.
Yeah.
The approach and on both sides would need to be addressed for my apparatus to be able to turn around sufficiently. Normally, we do that once we get a building permit and, or a permit for a subdivision, and we make sure that the roads will support the vehicle. But in this case, I was asked simply about the bridge, and that's where I kept my response to.
Just thinking that big ladder truck coming over has to turn around because it's not going to back out the bridge.
That.
Well, that, I guess that discussion's for another day.
But his reference was to make a bridge that was similar to Pompaneset, and as I had talked around with several people in the town, the Pompaneset Bridge was built specifically to be able to handle the fire trucks that I have in service today.
Super. Thank you.
Do you need me to stick around, or can I go?
I think we're good.
Been a busy day.
I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else? Please.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is John Bowen. I'm an attorney with the Boston Law Firm, Rackman, Sawyer &amp; Brewster. I represent the two private owners who own the last two houses on the left on the north side of Punkhorn Point Road. At number 80, Punkhorn Point Road is James Atkins and John Weltman. At number 84 is Robert and Michelle Wolpe. Mr. Wolpe is here in the audience this evening. And we oppose this application. First of all, despite what was spoken of earlier by Attorney Wall, this is actually a complete repeat of what was denied by this board five years ago. The fact that he shows a plan with a proposed bridge does not mean that this board should be taking the taxpayers' time and money and expense, also expense for the landowners, to come down and oppose this. It really is exactly a do-over. I suggest that, under chapter 48, section 16, that decision issued by this board in 2013 was not really final, because the appeal is still pending in Superior Court, where the Superior Court and its personnel are working on this at taxpayer expense, and where attorneys representing the parties are expending their time and resources on this. And I think it behooves the applicant, and I would request that the board require the applicant to dismiss that appeal in Superior Court if he is actually coming forward with a brand-new proposal, because otherwise, we're going to have different clashing things that will just generate more litigation, more expands more time. To the issue of why this is not actually a new proposal, you can present any kind of plan that shows a proposal, but that does not mean the bridge is actually anything more than drawings on a new plan. I was the attorney representing the property owners before the Department of, pardon me, Department of Environmental Protection. I also represented landowners in the land court issue, a dispute over ownership of what SN Trust claims to be their property. Taking the DEP action first, the Department of Environmental Protection denied the plaintiff's proposal to build a timber bridge to the island. Partway through, or actually, that was waived, partway through that proceeding, they decided to present a plan for a wider, heavier steel bridge that would perhaps be easier to accommodate the fire trucks. That proposal was also denied by DEP. That went up to, or is denied by the administrative appeal from which DEP appeals are taken. So right now, the status quo about that bridge is it does not exist. Not only is it not just a proposal, it is a denied proposal. So there is no bridge, there is no actual live bridge proposal. They've appealed the denial, but that's where we are now. There is no bridge, and there's no bridge proposal. This proposal was rejected, this proposed bridge. That's on the DEP issue. And on the land court issue, it's kind of hard to see, but Punkhorn Point Road, where it is shown on this plan, is actually, and this is important to note, is a dirt road. The zoning bylaws that they are citing, two of them, require that there be access from a paved road. It is a very genuine dispute in this issue here, whether or not the applicant has any right to pave the road, has any right to bring utilities down the road. We dispute both rights, and it's also a dispute, and has not been proven, that the applicant has any right even to travel on the road. Punkhorn Point Road, the evidence is, in these other proceedings, is a private road. The zoning bylaw provisions say there has to be access to a public road. Punkhorn Point Road is not a public road. Where it starts up by number 80, just off the edge of this plan here, Punkhorn Point itself, road, becomes narrower. It is paved up until you get to number 80, right before number 80.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Then it gets narrower, and it's a dirt road. It has always been a dirt road for probably decades, decades upon decades. It is a private, unpaved, narrower road. So there's, we dispute vigorously their right to even come down Punkhorn Point Road. It's a private road. And we dispute vigorously their right to run utilities down that road, or to do anything to improve or widen that road. One other slightly technical issue I'd like to point out before I forget it, is Mr. Wall mentioned a couple times, the bylaw 174-32, the fire protection bylaw, says that there has to be a road 150 feet from the lot. Actually, that's not entirely accurate. The paved road has to be 150 feet from the building on the lot, and that's a big difference, because the proposed location of the house, I believe, is not right up against the channel. I don't actually know exactly where they propose to put it. It's going to be a very hard house to site because of the flood zone issues that were read into the record and other matters. But there's a lot of things that are very much undecided here. To come back here for a redo, it's not even a new request, while there's a live action pending in Superior Court, is wasteful and unnecessary. I ask that the request be denied on those grounds, and also on the grounds that, even as presented, it fails to meet the requirements of this town's bylaws itself, and also, it fails to satisfy the requirements of chapter 48, section 10 for variance. There is nothing about the soil topography or shape of Gooseberry Island that justifies the variance. It's an island surrounded by water. That is not a soil condition, or a topography issue, or a shape issue. The issue they have is they can't get to it. And they can't get to that island, and therefore can't build a bridge that island because they don't own the land on the mainland that they think they own. We assert ownership to the southern boundary and just below of Punkhorn Point Road, and below that, the town has an active claim that they own it. Those issues are open, and there will be a decision on that, but the idea that someone can simply say, "Well, we think we own it, and we have a deed," council, I'm sure, very familiar town council, Ms. Connolly, very familiar with this case, will tell you, that the claim of ownership is what's called a release deed, and it was for no consideration. It was for $0. And so my final point would be that this claim of financial hardship is that this current owner bought an island for no money, and with no proven way of access to it or any ownership on the part of Mashpee, where he thinks he's going to put a bridge, and footings to a bridge, and a large impactful bridge in very sensitive wetlands areas. Be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you.
Anything else, Robert? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just weigh in and say council is correct. It's simply a release deed that was taken for no payment. And also, financial hardship is not one of the requirements to prove hardship under the bylaw. It's got to be, as Mr. Bowen also said, owing to unusual circumstances of shape, soil conditions, or topography, and none of those exist here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Hi, I'm Ashley Fisher, the Mashpee Shellfish Constable. I'd just like to state for the board, on chapter 130, section 57, whoever without permission, the consent of the licensee as the grant holder, if they don't have permission from the licensee, they cannot disturb the licensed area for the growth of the shellfish there in any way, discharge any substance which may directly injure the shellfish in the area. They should be liable if anything like this happens, if they need to move forward, and they should seek funds. So the grant, if the bridge was put in place in the grant area, pilings, et cetera, the damage to the grant area. So unless we see a flying bridge moving forward, it's going to disturb the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure. Absolutely.
A lot was said, and I'm not going to rebut every single thing, because I don't think it's necessary to. As far as the way is concerned, before it was called Punkhorn Point Road, it was called "The Way to Gooseberry Island," and it was used to get to the island. My client claims rights to that way and claims land on the mainland side. It's under litigation, but if there were no claim, the case would have been dismissed summarily. So the fact that it went to trial shows that there's a claim. The judge is going to decide that. That segues to the next issue. The bridge is under appeal at the DEP. During the process, when the proposal changed from a timber pier to a steel bridge, the department actually changed its position and approved the bridge, or said that they would approve it. And the appeal is actually on a very nuanced point as to whether the applicant had the right to change the plan to the bridge, and whether it was within the scope of that plan change policy. The point I'm trying to make here is that all of these fine points of law are actually to be decided in other forms. The land court will decide the title issue. The Superior Court will decide the DEP issue. The proposal before you is for this bridge to be there, and I think the board can go forward and act on this. So obviously, the board has discretion to make up its mind. But my point is, is that this is an eligible proposal. It's completely different than the first one, because the concern there was access, so now we're proposing access. And all of these concerns that had been raised can be addressed through conditions. You can simply say, "The variance is granted upon condition that the title exists, that the bridge will be built." Frankly, I really think it's a straightforward thing. I respectfully disagree with town council as to far as the soil and topography. This is like the poster child case of a variance, because the island is not on a street, and we're asking for relief from the variant, from the provisions of the bylaw. And we've established a hardship, we've established that literal enforcement will cause a hardship due to the soil conditions and topography. And the concerns, if you go back and look at your prior decision, you didn't talk about title, because the bridge wasn't proposed and it never came up. You didn't talk about the bridge, because it wasn't proposed. What you talked about was public safety and access to the island, and the bridge specifically addresses that. So we would ask the board to review this application and grant the relief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you?
Constable?
Sorry. Have you and your client considered the tribe's claims, and how would you replace their fishing rights, should there be pollution there that makes their fishing, their fish unpalatable?
Shellfish.
Shellfish grant.
Shellfish grant.
So I think the way I understand the tribe's claims, and I don't, I certainly... that if there's some sort of catastrophic storm and the septic system fails due to breakout, it would pollute the shellfish. The idea is to put the house somewhere towards the center of the island. It will be far away from the shore. It will be buried in the ground like all other septic systems are. And when and if that time comes, when we apply to the Board of Health, the Board of Health can condition that septic system to make sure that it's safe.
So up to this moment of my question, nothing has been done to protect the tribe in your presentation, am I right?
I wouldn't put it that way. The way that I would put it is that the septic system is not yet proposed. So those concerns are speculative right now. They're not before the board and they're not on the table. And secondly, as far as protecting the tribe, the bridge will allow access underneath. It will be sufficiently high so people can pass back and forth underneath. And if you look at, I gave my pointer back to the engineer. There's one set of piles here in the intertidal zone, and there's one set here at the bridge. The whole idea of going to the steel bridge was to span the channel so that there won't be any pilings in the marsh and there won't be any pilings in the center of the channel.
So the pilings are going to be in the middle of the shellfish, is that correct?
No, no.
They're going to be in the water? At any point?
Do you want to answer that, Tom? Why don't I let Mr. Haney explain that?
How you doing? I'm Matthew Haney, I'm the trustee. I'm very familiar with this property. Just to give you a little background, where the shellfish grant is, nobody knows. The way it's required is, it's supposed to be a legal description showing meets and bounds where the shellfish grant is. Nobody knows where it is. I mean, and I have a letter from town manager, they say it's subtitled, "Below Mean Low Watermark." As you can see from the plans, mean low watermark's here. We went to DEP with the wood bridge, the tribe said, "We don't want the pilings in the shellfish grant area." So what we did was, we came with the-
Take the mic off.
Come again?
You can take the mic off.
Oh, sorry. So what we did was, we moved the pilings originally from the wood bridge out of this area here, which is so-called disputed if it's in the shellfish grant area. Nobody knows. The town refuses to provide me with the legal required meets and bounds of the shellfish grant, which is required by Chapter 157. So they refuse to do it. If somebody has a copy of that, I'd be loved to see it. And so we put the pilings in here. I have a letter from the town manager saying that this shellfish grant is below low watermark. The pilings are above low watermark. So zero pilings in the shellfish grant, we're spanning the whole thing. Chuckie Green maybe said he needed to use that area there. And another thing that's very important here is, there's two docks right here. Where's Mr. Wulpe? Mr. Wulpe! So, if, you know, his dock, if it's in the shellfish grant area.
Right, Mr. Green?
No problem. Where's Mr. Atkins? Is he here? There's another dock in the shellfish area. No problem.
No, Mr. Atkins is granted outside.
That's what I'm saying, well, you know he knows. So you can't say there's a shellfish grant there unless you have the legal description including that area. I mean, this is a very straightforward process. You know, you got to understand, this is a variance request. This is Gooseberry Island. The whole point of having variances in the bylaws, in the statutes, is for this situation here. If you don't give the variances out, it's a regulatory taking. It's black and white. I mean, it meets requirements, I mean, I have, you know, the legal books here, what the definitions are for topographical, I mean, you want to read them. This thing screams, it meets all the required findings. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, you know, just because a couple of people that don't want the project doesn't mean they're going to, you know, they want the rest of the town to, what, to pay for it? They just don't have the development on Gooseberry Island? I mean, it's ridiculous.
Thank you.
I think the Shellfish wooden does know where the boundaries are, so if she can point them out.
Where's the, where's the name of the boundary?
Wait a minute, hold on. Hold on. Just address the board if you're going to.
I've seen the aquaculture license too, and Mr. Haney's correct, the statute says that it's supposed to be described like a deed by meets and bounds. And it simply says around Gooseberry Island. It's not clear where it is. And I think, I think what Mr. Haney's point too was to say that there are all these concerns about shellfish, or legal rights of access, or appeals to the DEP. The issue before the board is whether the relief can be granted such that it doesn't derogate from the purposes of the zoning bylaw. And I've tried to make the case, I hope you agree, the bridge provides access that frontage normally would. And we think that if you look at the bylaw, and if you look at Section 10, and you focus in on what your jurisdiction is, we've made a case for the variance.
Thank you. Any final comments before we go to vote on this? Go right ahead.
I don't know, I don't want to keep us here all night. I just disagree. I mean, in bringing up a regulatory taking is, I mean, I think that's kind of unfair because it's not applicable. I've done a lot of eminent domain type stuff, I kind of have some idea about that. If every denial of a variance request triggered a regulatory taking, you know, we know that doesn't happen. If you follow the, you know, procedures here, and I'm sure you will, and issue a ruling based on your own regulations, your own zoning bylaws, which they do not meet. There's no paved road, there's no access, they don't have a bridge, they have a claim for a bridge, they have a drawing. And right now, their drawings and their request for a bridge were denied. I mean, this is kind of silly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask town council the same question regarding the taking. Do you agree with which party on that?
I would agree with Attorney Bowen that there are many components to a regulatory taking claim. A denial of a variance is not a taking. One of the requirements is the loss of investment back expectations. And as was stated earlier, the claim of ownership is based on a release deed for which Mr. Haney paid nothing. So that component is not met. And there are other criteria that somebody has to prove, to prove that a denial of a permit or variance constitutes a regulatory taking, and they just don't exist in this case. And they're talking about the bridge as if it exists, but as we've discussed, there's no final approval for it.
Thank you. One sec.
All right, question through the chair. Sorry. Question through the chair to council. Out of curiosity, is your client looking to only have one home built there? Is there enough for septic systems, for two, three, four other out in that site?
The intention of my client right now is to have one single family dwelling somewhere towards the highest point in the center of the island.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Could I just address that regulatory taking matter? I think that there's speculation being made about the release deed. There was other consideration. And secondly, I don't want to act like I'm an authority, but I have a case in Falmouth that I did prevail in a jury trial on a regulatory taking, when there was a denial of a variance by the Conservation Commission. It's currently under appeal, but that again makes the point that this board should really, I say this out with all due respect, focus on the criteria in Section 10. And if you make your findings, if you go through the bylaw in Section 10 and make the findings, I think you'll see that we've made a compelling case for a variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have a final comment before we vote on this? Okay, seeing none.
Call the question.
I'm sorry?
Call the question.
Okay. So, would you like to make a motion on the first one, and then we will vote?
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the variance for Gooseberry Island and Punkhorn Point Road owner Gooseberry Island Trust and SN Trust requests a variance for a Section 174-12 of the zoning bylaws requiring frontage on the street and direct access to paved town, county, or state road or street as defined in the said section in order to construct a single residence on the property located in R3 zoning district, map 100 parcel 6R, 6-0-R Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, the board is determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass General Law 48, Section 10. Plan of Gooseberry Island prepared for Gooseberry Island Trust scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Date July 9, 2018, drawn by EJP, checked by TB, job number 13142. Revisions none, drawing number B21-70, sheet 2 of 2. Coastal bank profiles prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying. Conditioned upon all town department comments read into the account. That's it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Sharon, how do you vote?
Denied.
So that's a no?
Yep.
Okay, Brad, how do you vote?
No, I deny.
No, I deny.
No, I deny.
No, I deny. So let's go to the second one.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the variance with the following conditions for, oh, I'm sorry, a variance for Gooseberry Island and Punkhorn Point Road owner Gooseberry Island Trust and SN Trust requests a variance from Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws requiring 150 feet of frontage on a street in order to construct a single family residence on a property located in an R3 zoning district, map 100 parcel 6-0-R Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, the board is determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass General Law 48, Section 10. Plan of Gooseberry Island prepared for Gooseberry Island Trust scale 1 inch equals 20 feet. Date July 9, 2018, drawn by EJP, checked by TB, job number 13142. Revisions none, drawing number B21-70, sheet 2 of 2. Coastal bank profiles prepared by BSS Design Engineering and Surveying. Conditioned upon all town department comments read into this record, into the record.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Sharon, how do you vote?
I deny, no.
Brad?
No.
Jim?
No, I deny.
No, I deny.
And no, I deny. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Oh, we got radio here.
So. It seems to be a threat.
So.
That was long. I guess.
It's still here, there's nothing else.
Long. We get some work done now.
Scott?
Yes.
Check the correct box.
Yes, sir. Well, your name's not even on here.
Good night, everyone.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Send it.
No, his name's not on there.
He has a black pen. Ron's is not on there for some reason.
Because we already know.
Because we already knew he was stepping down.
Usually steps in it, but.
Too long. Good, don't have to read all these motions anymore. Get on. That was a lot.
Yeah, but look at the date though. Ah, that's why.
Jim?
Never looked.
Same for me.
Look what I got to learn.
Hey, good luck with that.
Stamp it.
Good night, everyone.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Send it.
No, his names aren't on there.
Here's the black pen. Ron's is not on there for some reason.
Because we already knew.
Because we already knew he was stepping down.
Usually steps in it, but.
Too long. Good, don't have to read all these motions anymore. Yeah, come on. That was a lot.
Yeah, but look at the date, though. Ah, that's why.
I'll save them for.
What I got to learn.
Hey, good luck with that. I had SN Realty Trust. Uh, Jimmy, you have three. Spot the sign.
Three to sign.
Make sure you check the correct box.
She's getting ready to leave.
Sharon, we're almost ready.
Okay, coming back.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for their patience. Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
323 Hoopole Road. Owner Robert D. Lippman requests a special permit under 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 41, parcel 57, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. And for the record, your name and address?
My name is Rob Lippman, 323 Hoopole Road, Mashpee.
Hi.
Hi.
So let us know if you would, oh, sitting on this hearing will be our five regular board members. Go ahead.
Um, so basically I had to try to just get, we have an in-law apartment in our home and we'd like to get it legalized.
Okay.
I do have photos of it and a sketch drawing that I made.
Okay, so this is going to be in the basement?
Yes.
Is this exactly exist?
It already exists. We, when we bought the house, it was already.
Okay, you bought the house, this is a change of ownership?
Yes.
This was approved, was this approved before?
Well.
Okay. I'm just trying to get the.
The previous owner told us that it was, but when I came to look into it.
So it's never been approved?
Never been approved. So you're doing what you need to do?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So your access.
So, accessory apartments, right. Page 86.
Okay.
86.
You know how many square feet it is?
Uh, not exactly, but it's probably around 700 square feet.
All right, let me go over a few of the issues that I have just looking at this. And you did a nice job, but we need a lot more information. For instance, we're talking about 174-45.4 accessory apartments. The principal dwelling shall not be occupied by anyone other than the property owner as listed on the latest recorded deed. B, the applicant must provide documentation endorsed by the Board of Health or its agents that the proposed accessory apartment conforms to all state and town health and sewage disposal regulations. Unit size, the design, installation, use of an accessory apartment shall be secondary and incidental to the principal use of the structure as the owner's home, and the apartment shall be located within the same structure as said home. Now we get to the good stuff. The gross floor area of the accessory apartment shall not be less than 300 square feet.
Less than.
So we gotta know the size.
Says 700.
It nor more than 40% of the gross floor area of said structure on the date the permit application is filed.
Yeah, we don't know.
So we gotta know how big the whole house is.
How many square feet of living space? The 300 is no problem.
Have you actually looked at these rules, regulations?
Yeah, I have, but I didn't know I needed that today.
Well, today's like decision day.
Today's the day where we're going to make a decision.
The accessory apartment shall be self-contained with a separate sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities for the exclusive use of the applicants, provided that the requirements of subsection B are met. There shall be a maximum of two bedrooms in the accessory apartment.
Yes.
Rooms which might be converted at some future time to a bedroom such as studies, studios, libraries, or the like shall be counted as bedrooms for the purposes of this section. At least one off-street parking space provided for the accessory apartment. No new driveway or curb cut shall be created to service the accessory apartment unless the board determines that due to severe topography or other constraints on the lot.
It has all of those things that you mentioned.
Mr. Chairman, everything seems to be except, everything seems to be correct from what I can see from the plan, except for the 40%. Without knowing the square footage of your living space now.
Yep.
And what the total square footage of this is, that's the only number we can't.
Without looking it up, I mean, it's, the, the whole house is approximately, I think, 23, 2400 square feet.
Okay, yeah, unfortunately, we need something that we can stamp as certified.
Do you want to see photos of the?
No.
No, we need.
No. Would you care to comment on exactly what that means?
You're gonna have to.
He's gonna explain right now.
So basically, what the board is looking at is what you've provided is only a small picture in your drawing. It shows just the question, the area in question, but what they're looking for is the full layout showing not only the proposed accessory apartment, but the rest of the house and the dimensions, because basically, we gotta do a little bit of math, but that doesn't show the upstairs as well.
Doesn't show existing, existing dwelling.
Yeah, the, the whole house. They want a floor plan of everything.
Okay, I wasn't aware.
First floor, second.
Well, that's what they're, that's what that section means here, you know, 40%.
How do we get a floor plan?
Well, if, you've already started it halfway by drawing the bottom half. You just need to draw up the rest of the house, and lucky for you, it's, it's a straightforward box.
Rectangle.
Basically, rectangle. You can draw yourself, but you have to have the measurements.
Okay.
You know, in there, and that's what they're looking for, because we have, they have to do a little, not we have, they have to do a little bit of math. They gotta verify the 40%.
Not just the measurements, if you can do the square footage, say, you know, this basement is, with the whole space is 725 square feet.
Right, I, I can do that.
And then do the each level, then you can see what the percentages are, because we have to make sure it meets the town guidelines on square footage.
Okay.
So.
The town guidelines are 40%?
You're gonna have to speak up, because they can't hear you.
The town guidelines are 40%?
No more than.
No more than 40%.
Which, it sounds like you're gonna meet all the regulations, but.
Right, with it being a.
No less than 300 square feet, you got that.
But we have to have a piece of paper that we can refer to in our motion that says, I may be making the motion, because I make most of them, and so I have to refer to a document that lists all the things that put you in compliance of this, of the zoning bylaw of this town.
So this one gets put in the file, it's all there.
Right. So you have to take your application and actually list the, and answer every one of these questions through that application, through that document that you have in your hand.
Do I need to have the Board of Health comment, what kind of person?
Um, I can, I can tell you in a second.
The Board of Health has, has their report, but I want to be clear. You're halfway there, you've done the basement, so you have to show the rest of the house.
And just put the square footage.
And just put the square footage in there, and that's what they need.
The applicant must provide documentation endorsed by the Board of Health or its agent that the proposed accessory apartment conforms with all state and town health and sewage disposal regulations. So you may want to pass it by him.
Well, there's a comment.
There you go.
I mean, do you want to read it now, just so you know what they say? I'll read it.
You might want to, just in case.
He's gonna have to come back in.
Well, at least he'll know, at least he'll know if he needs something. Board Health comments, "The septic system is sized for four-bedroom total. Previous building permit was approved for the addition of the fourth bedroom in the basement, and the septic was inspected for that permit. Floor plan was submitted, reviewed, and acceptable." So the basement was finished.
Sounds like you're all set.
Sounds like the basement was finished with the permit, according to Board of Health.
But it's still, I mean, it'd still have to come in front of us, though.
They got a Board of Health.
There's one bedroom now, it's gonna stay a one bedroom.
Correct.
There must be three bedrooms upstairs?
Yep.
So you should be good there.
Okay. Do we have any other comments that you should know about? You've got that down, right? What the building commissioner told you need to do. There's also another comment from, from the DPW, and the comment is from Catherine, Catherine Laurent. "The applicant did not submit a site plan for the above, for the above. Based upon a visit to the property, it does not appear that there would be sufficient parking on-site for the principal dwelling as well as the proposed apartment without blocking access to the garage." I'm, I'm reading this to you so you understand what you're gonna have to show to us to, in order for the DPW to.
You're gonna have to go to the DPW and straighten this out.
"If the special permit is approved, I would recommend a condition be imposed requiring the applicant to provide all parking on-site with a turnaround to prevent vehicles from backing out onto Hoopole Road. The applicant should submit a site plan delineating the minimum parking spaces required to the building department for review."
I would recommend you come in and see Mary Ann and get a copy of these letters, DPW, Board of Health, and any other letters that were issued to this board, so that you can deal with them.
Mike, I'm showing a two, two-car driveway, why would they need more than that?
I, I don't understand, and that was a question through the chair. Sir, would you mind stepping up here because, and show me, and, and show myself in the chair? The, the DPW is talking about a garage, where's their garage?
Draw it in if you would.
Right, yeah.
It's on the corner of Hoopole and Bed Bath Road.
To drive under garage.
What's an under?
It's an under. But it's already a two-car wide driveway, why does she?
I don't.
I don't know why you need a turnaround. Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, but she said she went to the site.
She must have not known what a drive under garage was.
It's a corner lot, so there's.
No, I understand. We're, we're just trying to understand what the.
It's a typical raised ranch where the garages drive under, and you walk into the basement.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't think they need a turnaround if it's a two-car wide driveway.
I didn't write it.
I know, I'm just saying, I don't know why she made that comment, I wouldn't.
Yeah, you mentioned something about a turnaround.
Yeah, I don't think you need a turnaround.
DPW did, yeah.
So if, if we dispute the turnaround, what do we have to do?
All you have to do is just straighten it out with.
The DPW.
The DPW.
If I may, through the chair, what I would recommend is, is set up an appointment to meet with me, and let me try to work with you to, to address a lot of these issues, because I think you're there, I just need to get you there.
We just need some numbers we can put in that we can approve.
Right, so, so contact my office, say you want to have an appointment with me. Nobody. He's a zoning enforcement officer as far, he's God.
He's real important.
He's the main man.
Are you the building?
He's the zoning enforcement officer. I'm the commissioner man.
Inspectors report to him.
No, that's okay. I don't want to know either. But contact my office, we'll set up an appointment, I'll, I'll work with you, I'll guide you where you have to go to get through these little bumps. From what I'm seeing, these are not really big hurdles, but the DPW has raised a question, and we've got to get that addressed, and I'll direct you how to get in touch with them, what you should bring to me, and as far as what the board is asking for, we can go over that as well. Maybe we can search the town records, we may find a plan on the house which may assist the board in the decision-making. It all depends on the age, so we can try that as well, so, but set something up that way I can focus solely on your case.
So I suggest that you probably continue it, uh, January 12th, uh, 9th, Joe. Can, you think you can straighten it out by January 9th?
So are you, are you requesting an extension, sir?
Continuance.
Till January 9th? Back up to the mic if you would. Continuance? So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, a continuance, the request for a continuance by, sorry, I apologize, by Mr. Lippman until January 9th, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, in reference to the request for a special permit under 171-45.4 of the zoning bylaw for, allow for accessory apartment on property located in an R5 zoning district map 41, parcel 57, Mashpee, Mass. 2323 Hoopole Road, Hoopole Road.
So hold on one sec, we have a comment.
Okay, just so the board understands this, you haven't gone through the entire process yet, meaning reading all the department's comments?
I said that I recommended to him to meet with Mary Ann to get all those.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, for the record, you haven't read all the comments yet, so when the applicant comes back.
We have to do that.
There you go.
And they may change.
And that's a possibility too, but I'm just saying, don't.
We have to read that all into the record.
Yeah, sometimes when you have the, the continuance, that you, you think that it's already been done, I just want to make sure.
I understand. So I think because there are going to be some potential changes after his sit-down with you, we would need to read all the comments back in anyway.
This one be sure.
And if there's any new comments or information, do we get that before we come on the 9th, or no?
If I may, through the chair, what you can do is you can contact, once again, my office, speak with Mary Ann, and she can alert you whether or not something new has come up, because it is public information.
Okay.
All right?
Very good. Thank you.
Let's get a second.
Second I did.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Think it's assigned?
No.
All right. Sharon, would you read the next new here?
439 Nathan Ellis Highway, unit 6. Petitioner Katrina Kumbatis, specials.
Kumatiyanis.
Okay, I'm sorry. Request. Kumba Batadesis.
Excuse me?
Just keep going.
Just, okay, I'm butchering your last name.
It's Greek.
Request a special permit under 174-25E7 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a dog grooming and daycare business on property located in a C2 zoning district, map 2, parcel 23, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Brickyard Marketplace Nominee Trust.
Hi.
Hi.
Let us know, well, for the record, your name and address.
Kalina Kumbadiyades and Russell Gonzalez.
And you're the owners of?
Yes.
Captivating Canines, 439 Nathan Ellis Highway, unit 6, Mashpee.
Do I understand it's already an existing business?
Yes.
Yes, it's been, it's, it's been established for over eight years, and we took over from our family member, she moved to Florida three months ago, and we assumed that all permits were in place, and you can see we attached her sign, which was approved in 2011 by the town through the contractor, day sign company, Gary Campbell, and as you can see, the sign, copy of it attached, it says on it, dog grooming, daycare, and self-serve dog wash. So it was all approved through the town, and the owner herself saying she didn't even know she needed some kind of special permit for the daycare. You know, we usually have about one, two dogs a week, really, so when I told our landlord maybe we shouldn't even apply, he said, "No, that's how you bought the business, you assuming the same services they were offering." And as you know, in the dog grooming business, the dogs stay in minimum four hours a day at the place, so you're taking care of the dogs anyway. So when we applied for sign, Mary, Mary Ann said that we need to apply for special permits, and so we're doing it right, right way, I guess, because it wasn't done properly. And I just wrote, you know, that it's a, it's established business for over eight years, our regular clientele plus we gain newer clients. For the past three months, we only were there for three months. So it's really established business, and we didn't know. We just came in and we were told by, I think, building inspector left, would my say that? Yeah, she said that, that's what we need to do.
Okay. So you did get the sign approval, but there is.
Yes.
So they have a sign approval, but there is no special permit for this on file?
We came to get, yeah, exactly.
There is no record of any, and when we saw it, we go, wait a minute, it says, you know, the bylaw. So what we have here is a pre-existing use, but we don't have a record of it going before the ZBA, so the applicant here is just trying to correct this, and as you know, once, if the board sees fit to grant, it goes with the property, not if the ownership changes, which is what happened in, with these people, you know, they, they took it all, take thing, and they were all set with everything, and then we went, we went to check the records, went, oh, wait a minute, you know, so.
Right.
Basically, they're just trying to correct something.
Yep.
Is anything changing what the previous owner was doing regarding what you're going to do?
No, not even prices, all the same. We really just improved the place.
You're offering the same services.
Yes.
As the previous owner.
Yes, we just improved the place inside, updated, and the landlord came, you know, and asked us, you know, to do a couple things, they were kind of let down, and, you know, we took care of that, so it's nicer inside, but otherwise, it's all the same.
Mike, is there anything specific to this use in this? I don't see anything specific to this use as to compliance thereto in reference to our zoning bylaw, other than it's a special permit?
That's it. It, it all comes down to is your typical, you know, questions asking about, you know, operations, whether animals are gonna stay over or not, you know, things along that nature, it's very basic.
So the animals are not, no animals staying over?
No.
You're asking me?
No one's staying overnight, because if you would do kennel business, you have to have separate license and insurance, and we're not going there.
I already have that as a comment.
It's, it's extra, it's ex, we're not.
You're just grooming and you're not doing boarding?
Yes, no.
No boarding.
Because we had someone came through that did boarding.
Right.
No, we're not. We have enough.
So that can be a condition that we?
I think it would be.
You can't do boarding.
No, we're not, yeah, and our insurance would be completely different, and you have to have through state different when you apply, you have to have different type of, instead of LLC for the boarding.
So people come, they drop off their dog, they leave the dog with you, or.
Grooming.
Cat or whatever, I guess, and then they come back, when you tell them to come back two hours later, and they pick up the dog, the animal.
For, it's minimal, yeah, yep.
Exactly.
That's it, in and out, just a cat dress.
Sharon?
I have, like, I have a few, I guess, concerns or questions. My question is the fact that it's next door to a restaurant, so I didn't know if there were any health issues with it being next door to a.
No, they've been next to each other for over like eight years, so they, they have no any issues.
Do you want to be commenting? Through the chair, I, I understand your questioning on this, and, and I would agree, if this was something that was brand-new being proposed, but as the applicant, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicant, I'm just trying to mediate or assimilate information here, is that here's a business that's been existing for several years. I, I had a conversation with a health agent, and he has no knowledge of any issues, because I asked the same thing, it says, "No, that's been there." And as we all know, the, the health agent has probably submitted a report to discuss this, which will be read into the record, but I understand your line of questioning. Guaranteed, if this was something being new.
Okay.
It, it would be, but this is something that. agent has probably submitted a report to discuss this, which will be read into the record, but I understand your line of questioning, guaranteed if this was something being new, it would be, but this is something that's, all it is, is a change of ownership, and because it's a change of ownership, that's what, that's what brought it to light in my office, because they came in for the signage issue, and then we started going, okay, this is what's happening.
Okay, and then I had, now, this is me now talking, not as a board member, as a mother, I have now an adult child who is deathly afraid of dogs. Now, I've voted for doggy daycares in the past, but the fact that it's in a high-traffic area, and I had a child that was so fearful of dogs, this would have prevented, I mean, would have presented a problem of me going to any of the other establishments in that strip mall.
They're inside behind two gates, and they all in the, you know, no one is walking around.
But it's the entering and exiting, as a mother of a child that would be fearful.
But they have to bring the dog on leash, so.
I just, I'm, like I said, I'm talking as a mother, not as a board member, I mean, board member at this time. She would literally wouldn't have gotten out of the car, even if the dog was leashed, but if she then was, accidentally ran into it, this is my child, now she's in college, but she would have just had a complete nervous breakdown if we accidentally ran into each other, so these are just, I'm talking as a mother, not as a board member right here. So that was another concern I had, was little children, and then, again, as a mother, there are, I drove by the establishment the other day, and there were middle school kids on bikes in front of the establishment, like, so there, you know, it's, it, but it's a residential neighborhood, it's not like the other establishments that we've approved in the recent past, where they were in industrial parks away from other people, that's, I'm talking as a mother.
Hey, concerned?
Do me a favor, explain about the daycare, exactly what happens when somebody drops their dog on daycare, let's say they, I don't know what happens.
They have half-day or full-day, four hours or eight hours, that's all, they just play, they have an area where they play inside, they're not outside, and they can go, we don't take over five dogs, which we never had more than two, but that's our limit.
So they could be potentially just one pen for all five dogs?
Not, it's like a little gate, you know, like little running area for them, could be one, yes.
And there's individual kennels.
And they're individual kennels, yes, so we usually have to find out if they're good with other dogs, and also which family, if there is like two dogs or three of one family, they play together, but mostly, we had, again, it was really two.
You envision a maximum of five?
Yeah, because it's really grooming business.
Do you have a problem if there was a condition set that said there'd be no more than five dogs in the daycare?
No, I don't have problems with that.
That wouldn't be a problem for you?
No.
Not at all.
Because our main focus is really grooming, it always was per previous owner.
So if the permit was conditioned on a maximum of five dogs in the daycare part of it, on a daily basis, would not be a problem for you?
No.
What did Board of Health say?
I got it.
Did they talk about?
Yep.
Yeah, they do.
We got a board up coming, Board of Health, more than three dogs are boarded overnight than a kennel license from the town clerk's office would be required, she's not going to do that, so that's not an issue, but they're not going to do that since we see.
What happens if the dog was?
We have bags, we have bathers, they clean it up, and it all goes in the trash, and there is at the back, we have a trash, you know, the professional, we pay in about $5.25 a month, they come and pick up trash.
Have a dumpster?
Yeah, dumpster, and they clean up, they're ours now.
Didn't the other daycares have special dumpsters?
Well, they were staying overnight.
Yeah, we don't do overnight.
Yeah, those would go overnight.
Yeah, it's a little different.
I'm sure it's minimal. I mean, they're set up similar to what we take our dog, it's, it's a penned area, some of the dogs, when they're done, are put in kennels if they're not, they don't play nice.
Yeah.
I'm just going to, I'm just going to read through special permit, and kind of what we're looking for not to happen. Special permit may be issued only following the procedure specified by the general laws, and may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, and plans, and the key, will not adversely affect public health or safety, will not cause excessive demand on community facilities, will not significantly decrease surface or groundwater quality or equality, will not have a significant adverse impact on wildlife habitat, estuary systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, public lands or neighboring properties, will not cause excessive noise levels, vibrations, electrical disturbances, radioactivity or glare, and it goes on and on. But I think the main thing here is will not cause excessive noise, so that is one of the keys to.
Mr. Chairman, I think the way we could handle that would be to condition on no more than five dogs on a, on a daily basis that would be able to stay there.
For daycare.
For daycare.
Five at a time.
At a time. If that works for you, I just want to make sure, I don't want to stymie your business, it's important that you have a thriving business, so that works for you.
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, it's the, there's a restaurant next door, and I'm concerned about potential barking with the restaurant next door, so how are you going to handle that?
Is that the same restaurant that's been there for eight years, next to the same place?
There was no complaints, we were very good friendly with them, they come over, they bring pizzas.
You've had up to five dogs there already, right?
We never had more than like two for daycare, but Sean, I had it before, in summertime, she had, when I asked her previously, what was your maximum she had, she said five, that's why I'm saying five, because she had five, we didn't yet, we were here three months only.
So basically, if I, through the chair, is understanding what they're saying here is basically this, is that if noise complaints start coming in, because whatever a budding business is, you're going to be back here, and it's going to get scrutinized, that's basically cutting to the chase on this, and as long as you understand it, because I understand, you've, you've just recently, President, how long you've owned the business?
Three months.
Excuse me?
Three months.
Three months, so, just letting you know, and that's basically with the board, why they're reading that section, to let you know that the board sees fit to grant it, noise complaints that come in from the budding businesses, from the animals, you, it's a good probability you're going to be back here.
Okay.
All right, and that's basically what they're trying to tell you.
So that's why I just wanted to review it, so you know right up front.
That's all.
That's fair.
Hopefully, have to come back.
No misunderstandings.
Sounds good.
Any more questions before we read some comments? Okay, what do we have for comments?
Conservation, no wetlands jurisdiction.
All right, I got inspections here, 439 Nathan Ellis Highway, Unit 6, the area is Zone C2, the applicant is seeking a special permit under 174-25E7, the zoning bylaws to allow for dog grooming and dog daycare business, that's it?
We read, Board of Health was read.
Board of Health has already been read. Nothing in conservation, right?
Yeah, there's no comment.
You said you read Board of Health?
Yes, we did.
I think that's it. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments, seeing none, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion, I'm going to apologize to Katerina for misspelling her, mispronouncing her last name to begin with, how's that? So I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Katerina Kumbatis?
Kumbatis.
Kumbatis. 439 Nathan Ellis Highway, Unit 6, under 174-25E, open print, seven, closed print, of the zoning bylaw to allow for a dog grooming and dog daycare business on property located in a C2 zoning district, map 72 parcel 23 Mashpee, Mass., owner of record Brickyard Marketplace Nominee Trust. Making the motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. general laws 48, section 9, it's conditioned also on no overnight boarding, and that there will be no more than five dogs in a given day per time in daycare. So no more than five dogs at a given time per day in daycare.
Sounds good.
Is that it?
That is it.
Okay, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Make a lot of money!
Well, you're going to talk to Mary Ann, because what happens is, is after a 20-day appeal period, you're going to have to report this at the registry deeds, but she'll explain the whole process to you.
Money, money, money.
Oh, I went to the wrong.
Thank you.
No wonder I couldn't find it.
Here you go, William. Need a pen?
Yeah, I got one, thank you.
Yeah, and I threw my agenda away.
The guy took it.
Today, the 12th?
Yep.
Thank you.
Put it near me, it's like my wife, it's near me, it's mine.
Please don't say I'm like your wife.
I didn't say you were like my wife, I'm actually like my wife.
I'm staying out of this discussion.
It takes anything to say, it's mine.
Don't put cash down in front of her.
Coming back.
Coming back.
Coming back.
All right, let's move right along, Sharon, would you read your next new hearing?
Yeah, I have the right one. I got it.
78 Buccaneer Way?
Nope, I got it. 78 Buccaneer Way. Owners William Whitlock and Amy Southworth request a special permit under 174-25I9 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a timber pier, ramp, and float on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 90 parcel 6 Mashpee, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board, for the record, my name is Michael Borselli from Thalmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. The applicant is here tonight seeking permission to install a timber pier, ramp, and float in the waters of Mashpee River. The property contains just over 22,000 square feet of land, there's a single-family dwelling centered on the property, surrounding the perimeter of the property is a sloping land form known as a coastal bank, at the base of the bank is a strip of salt marsh, shown in the olive-colored green, and then the actual waters of Mashpee River are in blue. This tan shape represents the proposed pier, ramp, and float. You have plans within your file that show some of the details of how we get from the high point on the plateau at the top, down to the water, there is a coastal bank, so there's a transition with platforms and some stairs down, there's a profile in your plan set. We cross the salt marsh on, with an elevated walkway to provide the required separation from the salt marsh surface, it also allows for public access underneath the walkway, and then there's a ramp in, an L-shaped float. This project was reviewed and approved by the Mashpee Conservation Commission, there was an order of conditions issued, there were comments from the Shellfish Wood and the Harbor Master, we've understood and met any of the concerns raised by either of the two parties. If the overall length of the walkway to the end of the float is 80 feet, and I need to come to you folks if it's in excess of 70 feet, it's actually only 50 feet, or 51 feet from mean high water, but because the coastal bank is considered a wetland resource, you measure from the top of the coastal bank, which is 80 feet. I think that sums it up, if you vote to authorize this special permit, our next step would be to go file with Chapter 91 and Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Brian, by?
Have you complied with all the orders, or all the orders that you can comply with in reference to design with the Conservation Commission?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, let's read some comments.
Conservation, 79 Buccaneer Way, this project has been approved and permitted by the Conservation Commission, note, no construction can commence until the homeowner provides a copy of a recorded Chapter 91 state license for this project, or for this stock.
I got inspections here, the area is, excuse me, 78 Buccaneer Way, the area is zoned R3 and is in a precontact archaeologically sensitive area listed as moderate, the applicant is seeking a special permit under 174-25I9, the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a timber pier, ramp, and float.
I got Board of Health.
Go ahead.
No comment.
Great job, now I'm impressed.
Nothing?
Read that again?
Harbor Master does not have any comments.
Nope.
Scott, would you read Board of Health again?
No comment.
All right, conservation, we already got?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Ron?
I would like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to William Whitlock and Amy Southworth of 78 Buccaneer Way, under section 174-25I9 of the zoning bylaw to allow for construction of timber pier, ramp, and float on property located in R3 zoning district, map 90 parcel 6 Mashpee, Mass. Making the motion, board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. general laws 48, section 6. I make reference to the site plan proposed, pier for 78 Buccaneer Way, William Whitlock and Amy Southworth, plan date August 7, 2018, plan scale as shown, prepared by Thalmouth Engineering, revision date 2/23/18, add river name, riverfront areas, revision date 9/10/18, revise eight-foot wide pier, section 2, four-foot wide, signed by Michael J. Borselli, civil registered professional engineer, number 35054, also conditioned on all town department comments read into the record.
Do a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Thank you.
There you go, William.
Thank you.
I looked at the wrong place, I went over, there's a Metacom off Ninnigrit. I went to the wrong place.
There's two Metac...
There, off Ninnigrit, there's a Metacomit without the ET at the end.
Really?
Yeah.
The Metacomit is in South Cape.
Yeah, so I went to the one on John's Pond.
That's going to be tough on the fire department, too, if they get a, get a.
Got to be a little different name.
No, I typed it in, and you know how it comes up, and I'm like, oh, that's right down the street, and I looked at this street that's runs, runs into Ninnigrit, down on John's Pond, so I couldn't find the house, and now I understand why I couldn't find the house.
Okay, we all set?
It was on, if it was there, it would be on Wetlands, because it was on John's, so you get, we're, I was very confused.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
21 Metacomit Road owner, the 21 Metacomit Road LLC, Co., NJCJ LLC, request a written finding under 174-33, setback from water and wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition on property located in R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 63 Mashpee, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, Michael Borselli, I represent the applicant, James Whitney, we've filed the request for a written finding to allow us to do some modification. Oh, I'm sorry, it is a trust name, and I'm. And the pier was important to the family, so the pier application came first. We're here tonight in hopes that you can make a finding that the proposed renovations are not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Specifically, the existing house is non-conforming to setback to a wetland. It's non-conforming to setback because the existing corner of the existing garage that's on the property today, this corner, is only forty-eight feet to the edge of wetland, in this case, salt marsh. It's the only non-conformity on the property. It's two feet non-conforming to that fifty-foot setback. It's only forty-eight feet. What the applicant is proposing to do is do some renovations by re-siding, re-roofing, building a wraparound porch, and proposing an eight-foot extension to the existing garage, so eight by twelve. And that eight by twelve has been designed so that it meets the setback to the wetland of fifty feet. So, the existing structure's pre-existing non-conforming because it's forty-eight feet. All of the improvements will be conforming, so we're not creating any further non-conformity from what currently exists with the home renovations that I just described. So, we have previously applied to this board for similar, under similar cases, requesting a written finding, and we're hopeful that you can make such a finding on this case as well.
We approved the dock, right?
You did.
Yeah, I remember the separation and the conversation.
Yes.
So, if you were to show me just by finger, where would the dock roughly be?
It was gonna be ten feet off this property line in parallel.
Nowhere in the area of this non-conformity.
Absolutely not.
So, I have a question. It says, "existing overhang," but then it says, "proposed garage." And I was out looking at it, and it's an interesting property, but, yeah, I didn't see a garage there, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, there's a garage door here, and it's existing from where I'm pointing with my thumb in this direction. It's a very small, modest, almost not a garage, it's almost more like storage, but there's a garage door, and you could get a small car in there, which is one of the reasons that Mr. Whitney has applied to make it eight feet deeper so he could get a vehicle inside, a larger vehicle inside.
So, the only... Well, if you read my comment, I understand they're asking for a written finding, but because the proposed garage area is within the fifty-foot buffer, usually a variance also goes with that because they're going deeper into it.
No. He's saying the forty-eight, he's not adding, the forty-eight exists today.
But you said he's adding to it.
Adding to it, but not increasing the non-conformity.
Not increasing the non-conformity.
But is he going into, what direction is that the addition is going?
This way.
More into the fifty-four?
No.
All right, then I'm correcting, then. I was, I'm in error.
And it was not...
The non-conformity is here.
Which exists.
The forty-seven.
He's going from here.
Oh, that forty-eight, that forty-eight is already there?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the forty-seven, the other corner.
And so the fifty's...
What he's doing is gonna be fifty. So, that's gonna be fifty.
All right, so that new section is not going deeper into the fifty-foot buffer.
Fifteen-foot minimum.
Right, we actually designed it that way because we knew we couldn't go closer.
Or you would have had to...
The forty-eight is an existing foundation?
Makes sense.
Because the plan doesn't clearly show...
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because the plan doesn't clearly show what direction it's being added.
Yeah, it looks to me like that's all new.
I apologize for that confusion. That's what I'm trying to, I'm gonna use this pen, and I'm gonna just, this is the part that's new.
Oh, I got you, just extending it.
Right.
I got you.
This is existing.
Okay.
So, we extended this, and this is, meets the fifty. This existing corner doesn't...
We should have had a plan to show that.
It actually says, "existing" overhang.
Yeah.
I agree. Time to read that.
What's confusing is that I wrote the word "proposed garage" here as though this is all new.
That's what I thought.
And that's, I apologize for that. It's not all new. It's only this little eight-by-twelve section.
Gotcha.
Apologize for that.
So, we can, can we fix that so there's no...
Through the chair, sir, as you know, this becomes part of the record. And never mind twenty years down the road, three months down the road, if we had to pull this plan that you've given us to try to show where that, the plan does not reflect that, so...
What about if the motion contained something that prior to application for a building permit, you would have to correct the plan and change existing to, and draw a line where there's a dissemination between proposed and existing?
I don't have a problem with that, but does the board need to get that plan stamped for them to sign off on to become part of the record?
We can come in and sign it.
I just want to guarantee do that.
I'm happy to make a revision of the plan to make that clear.
I think the applicant's come in front of us enough times, we've trust him, and I think that we can work with him, and...
Well, I just gotta have the board to understand that the record has to clearly reflect...
You're gonna condition it that he's gonna bring in a revised plan that needs to be stamped and signed.
Appreciate that courtesy.
Good, good catch.
Thank you, Brad.
So, we're not, what's the lot coverage?
We saw on the second page.
The overall, the current lot coverage is six point seven, the new lot coverage will be eight point two percent.
I remember reading that online when you said it electronically. I said, "that's not an issue."
Not even close to an issue.
Okay. The only confusion I have is, it appears you're putting a second kitchen. Are you creating an in-law apartment or something? Because it's, it's got a kitchen, it's got...
It's an outdoor kitchen?
It's an indoor kitchen, and it's got a, I believe, a, so that's a proposed new kitchen, right?
I believe there'll be a renovation.
There's a bath here, and a kitchen, and I assume there's a bedroom?
On the next, on the sec, on the other...
Right over here? Is this, so I, the question is, are we trying to create an in-law apartment, or what are we doing here?
No, absolutely not, and if, that's not the intention, and it could certainly be a condition that says that, it's certainly not the...
If he brings the plans to Mike for approval, he's not gonna approve two kitchens.
Well, you can approve two kitchens. Yeah, you can.
Yes, I can.
You can?
Oh, yeah, there's a court case.
Absolutely. Have as many kitchens as you want.
Ernie Block.
Ernie Block.
That's a very famous one.
Really?
The judge has ruled you can have as many kitchens as you want.
Just like bathrooms.
Yeah.
It's bedrooms.
From a Portuguese heritage.
For Italian...
So, that being the case, if the layout doesn't depict another, you know, facility...
Yes, but you've got what says here, existing master bedroom, you've got a bathroom, you've got a kitchen.
So, we're asking questions.
That's all, yeah.
The only thing that's not shown in the bathroom area is, it shows your basic toilet, a sink, but it shows, I guess, what's this, a stacked washer and dryer? So, the only thing that's not here is a shower, a bath and shower sort of deal, which...
We can condition they can't put one in.
Can't put one in, no.
The bath and the shower.
Well, I don't think you...
I don't know if you want to, but...
Yeah, I don't think we have to do that. We just have to condition that we're not going to ever build an in-law apartment unless you come back and ask for it.
Or an accessory apartment.
Exactly.
Wait, wait, so, so, all right.
Condition?
Got it.
I can...
Not an accessory apartment unless they come back.
There's no intention to do that.
Okay.
If they have a seller later on down the road...
Right.
Even if it was approved, they wouldn't be...
So, there's not been a request, nor is the board approving an accessory apartment at this location.
No.
There's not been a request, and it's not been approved.
Right.
But it's been mentioned.
Right. Or they have to come back.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Let's see if there's any other things to read in.
All right, let's, let's read some comments, eh? Oh, boy.
I have a couple of papers today. I have inspections.
Thank you.
Twenty-one Metacomet Road. The area is zoned R3 and is in a pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under 174-33, setbacks from water and wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for a garage to be built. I question if this should be a variance, not a written finding. Please note that the proposed construction is within an AE-13 flood zone that shall be required to be constructed in accordance with all FEMA regulations. Also note, the board should examine the proposed upper-level second floor to confirm compliance with zoning.
Which we just did.
Board of Health.
Go ahead.
Twenty-one Metacomet Road. Board of Health comments: Floor plans reviewed, no new bedroom proposed, septic inspection is on file.
Conservation: This project has been approved and permitted by the Conservation Commission.
Did we miss anything?
No.
Any final, final comments here, questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none? Ron? Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to NJCJ LLC of Twenty-one Metacomet Road under Section 174-33, setback from wetland and wetlands of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition on property located in R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 63, Mashpee, Mass. The board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions of written finding under Master General Laws Forty-Eight, Section Six. Site plan: Proposed addition for Twenty-one Metacomet Road, prepared for James Whitney and Mashpee, Mass. Plan date: October 17, 2018. Plan scale one inch equals twenty feet. Project number 16097, CAD file number 16097SP New, drawn by LM DMM, sheet one of one, signed by Michael J. Borselli, Civil Registered Professional Engineer, number 35054, and Gary S. LeBriere, Registered Professional Land Surveyor, number 40039. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record. Also conditioned upon the applicant, prior to application for building permit, submit a new plan which will be part of the, which will become part of the record, which clearly depicts the existing garage from the proposed garage, thus clearly depicting the forty-eight feet which is, which is from the existing garage, and the proposed addition being fifty feet. Also conditioned upon, the applicant has not requested, nor has this board found or approved the addition of an accessory apartment, but there has been a discussion about it, but it has not been asked, nor has it been approved.
Are we good with that?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What do I do?
Norman does it.
I follow this thing.
You're welcome.
All right, so, I followed up this paperwork, so...
Can you get a new one?
Coming back.
Built all this.
Can't trust me with anything.
I don't know if we can do it with that one, if she'll...
Why don't we just come up with a new one, and the ones that need to sign it will be called in? How's that sound? What did you do?
I followed it up.
Well, at least he admitted it.
So, what?
Sign your name.
So, who wants to come in? Me? No big deal for me to come in and sign. If it's me, it's no big deal for me to come in and sign.
You gotta go to back UPS.
Wow.
It's ruining his life.
Ron, you're okay.
Well, absolutely, positively, yes.
It's me.
Yeah, yeah.
Sharon screwed up, too? Or did she?
I'm not signing.
She's not signing.
Oh, you can't sign.
I can't sign, he doesn't have to sign, because he wasn't there. So, Brad can sign. So, it's me.
Just you.
Just me. Just text me or call me, I'll come by. Tomorrow? Tonight? Tomorrow.
Why do I hurry this far?
Actually, we're doing well for time.
Hey. Yeah, one time. A little hurry.
I thought we were gonna be a lot later than this.
I will be this winter. It's getting cold out there. I'll be disappearing a couple times.
Back to the fire zone in California?
No.
This defective page is ready to be returned.
If you smoke, you're okay.
I'm taking full responsibility.
I know you are.
Not many people do that around here.
No, they do. It's been a few times.
All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
One eighty-seven Waiting Place Road. Owners: Dennis and Margaret Quilty, request a written finding under 174-17 to allow for alterations in addition, and addition on an existing deck on property located in R3 zoning district and the Pompaness Overlay District, map 112, parcel 89, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for hearing my case tonight. My name's Dennis Quilty. I own the property with my wife and our children, and we're seeking permission to have the, if I can just approach this...
Sure, I might wanna take the mic with you, that way she won't yell at us with his second.
Thank you. Sorry for that. So, it's this, this deck, the existing deck on the property, this is the front shot of you from Waiting Place, and this is from, oops, the side of the property next door to us. I know the owner is here tonight from next door. So, it's this deck here, which we'd like to enclose to make it a, basically a family room. There'll be no kitchen or plumbing, other than, you know, we'd like to get some heat in there somehow, but it'll be used basically for additional space for our family. We have four grandchildren now, and we come down a lot in the off-season and hope to be able to have things like Christmas, Thanksgiving, Easter, when we need to be inside more often. So, the deck gets a lot of use today outside, and the, the plan is, and this does, this is, you know, on the lot coverage presently, and I believe we are, we have no change to the lot coverage suggested by the addition. We have spoken to everybody around us, all sides across the street. I've had ten people come up to me last weekend, they need me to show up. I said, "I don't wanna bother people to do so," but we've had no objections from anybody. I mean, my neighbor is seated, I don't know what her position is as of yet, but we've been in the community for a long time and wanna just be able to stay in our cottage, didn't want to extend it by height or anything else, wanted to just try to stay within the frame of what we have presently, and that's about it.
How long have you owned the property?
Eighteen years.
And who put that deck in?
We did. It replaced an existing deck that was there when we bought the property. So, that, the, this room here was put on about ten years ago, and at that time, they had to replace the deck, and this was the replacement, replacement deck.
Okay, well...
All right, basically, the reason why I'm asking you the question is, we had someone come to question my office regarding the deck itself, whether or not it was permitted legally. Because as you know, from the site plan, you...
when we need to be inside more often. So, the deck gets a lot of use today outside, and the, the plan is, and this does, this is, you know, on the lot coverage presently, and I believe we are, we have no change to the lot coverage suggested by the addition. We have spoken to everybody around us, all sides across the street. I've had 10 people come up to me last weekend and need me to show up. I said, I don't want to bother people to do so, but we've had no objections from anybody. I mean, my neighbor is seated. I don't know what her position is as of, as of yet, but we've been in the community for a long time, and I want to just be able to stay in our cottage. Didn't want to extend it by height or anything else. Wanted to just try to stay within the, the frame of, of what we have presently. And that's about it.
How long have you owned the property?
18 years.
And who put that deck in?
We did. It replaced an existing deck that was there when we bought the property. So, that, the, this room here was put on about 10 years ago, and at that time, they had to replace the deck, and this was the replacement, replacement deck.
Okay, well.
All right, basically, the reason why I'm asking you the question is, we had someone come to question my office regarding the deck itself, whether or not it was permitted legally. Because as you know, from the site plan you've submitted, the deck is not 15 feet off the side yard. It's a little less, it's 13 point-
11.3.
Oh, 11.3. So, from what research my office looked into, we come across a site plan that does not show the deck on that property, and nor can we find a, a plan of that deck. So, that's why they're asking the question.
I have, I think I can find, I think I have the photo that came with the property when we bought it that shows the deck, and I know, and I believe I have, I don't have it here tonight, but I have the permit that was issued when that addition was put on, and that deck was the replacement deck. So, I know the town permitted it back, as I say, that was probably 10 years ago, 12 years ago.
Okay. I understand about the addition, what you're saying, but the inquiry came in regarding the deck itself.
I understand.
And that's all. So, you can understand where the line of questioning comes in?
Yes, yes, I do. But I, I can only tell you that when we bought the property, there was a deck. It was actually bigger than that, and when we did the addition, a piece of the deck, because the addition, the deck kind of went along the building and wrapped around behind the building. So, because we were creating this, if you think of from, from this window back, so it was the addition, so they had to take that piece of the deck off, and this was the replacement deck that was permitted at the same time. To the best of my knowledge, it was properly applied for and permitted back in the day.
You said you have a copy of that permit?
I, I don't, I don't have it with me here, but I'm pretty sure I have it back at the house.
I'd like to see it.
Okay. And again, I think I have it. I can't guarantee you that I have it, but I think I have it.
Yeah, because we have a letter, and there's a complaint about it, and it's not 15 feet, it's 11.3.
Right.
So, what basically we're saying is, it's an illegal deck.
Well, if-
Unless, that's why I want, I want to, if you've got a permit, I want to see it.
I would bring permit, pictures, anything you can put, some type of argument to this board that it existed prior to, you know, whatever you can put together.
Okay.
Not, you know, I don't know what's going to serve you to get to the end of that road, but whatever you can put together.
So, the complaint is that the deck-
You gonna read it in?
Is not-
I'll read it to you. Okay, it's from Walter and Shirley Kalman, 195 Waiting Place Road, Mashpee, Mass. Two, Office of Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Mashpee, 16 Great Neck Road North. And they got the zip code wrong, but that's fine. We, Walter and Shirley Kalman and Linda Mack, received a notice regarding the building application for 187 Waiting Place Road in Mashpee, Mass. We believe the proposal is not with zoning setback guidelines, which is 15 feet. We looked at the plan, and it indicates the structure will be 11 feet, three inches. We dispute the plan and will not approve a variance for the structure unless it goes by the guidelines, which is 15 feet. Sincerely, the Kalmans.
Can I make a comment that probably gonna want to have to clear up also? The site plan from Cape and Islands Engineering shows 11-9 to the corner of the step as the setback. Your proposed addition at 11-10, I think, is only to the corner of the deck, not to the-
It doesn't include a step.
It does include the step?
No.
It does not?
No, the, the, the proposed addition is on the deck, not the step.
Because this site plan is for the deck.
It's a raised step, isn't it?
Yeah, but the variance for the new addition would be less than that. It'd be farther from the setback.
But it would still probably not be 15.
It still wouldn't be 15 feet, but it's gonna be better than 11-9.
What you may want, but as one app, one member of the board, if you cannot, in your own mind, think that you can adequately prove the existence of that, right? You're so close to 15-foot setback, you may want to not build on top of the deck and just make sure that the addition is at 15 foot. Then you wouldn't need a variance or a finding, correct?
Correct.
You're so darn close.
Yeah.
When you take that step off, like you just mentioned. If it's a foot, that's, that's 12, you're only gonna take a foot or so off that deck. You don't have to come to see us. Correct me if I'm wrong.
As long as they meet the setback, there's no reason to be-
And then I think, I believe the setback's 15 feet.
Correct.
So, if you go, and your mind cannot prove to this board-
And that steps more than a foot.
Yeah.
It's, it's like a foot and a half.
So, there you go.
There's three, there's three treads, and they're six inches each, five and a half.
So, if it's three, if it's a foot and a half, you're at 12, you're at almost 13 feet. You're only gonna lose a foot or two off of that deck for your three-season porch, and you don't come back to this board.
And because it's on a funky angle, you could put a jog.
It is, I know it's an odd-
It's 15 feet. Just trying to save you from having to come back.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
When we have somebody who has given us a dot, input that we need to look at, remember, you need to prove to this board a hardship for variance. Okay?
Right.
Shape, soil condition, topography.
Understood.
You don't have an existing condition. If you can't prove to the, to, as one member, to me, as one member only, that that deck was always there, or you permitted it before, then you have to come back to, let's say, as one member, me, and ask for variance. I'm gonna have to look at those three things, and I don't believe, question mark, that you meet any of those.
As one board member, because if he can prove, if you can prove that that deck was permitted, and if they got a variance at that time, and you're, as one board member, and you're gonna make its, your setback better than it was before, I personally wouldn't have a problem with the addition.
I, I agree with that. I agree with what you're saying.
Because it's gonna get better.
But if he can't-
But if you can't prove that that was put in legally, then now we have a problem.
I agree. That's my point.
I, I know, I mean, I know, unfortunately, I think the contractor, he was a local guy. I think he's unfortunately passed away, but I'm pretty sure I have the permit. I know, I'm an attorney. I would never have applied for something.
It wasn't me. I would've stepped down.
I would never have applied for something without a proper permit. I know we filed for permission.
It's weird that you don't have it on file.
You can understand where we're coming from.
I agree. I agree. I, you know, I'm just, I'm quite frankly amazed because these people have been dear friends of ours for many years, and we've talked to them about this, and they never once suggested to us that they had a problem.
All right, through, through the chair. Sir, you mentioned earlier that you, back at home, have a permit for that.
I think I do.
If you do, one of the things is, if you can find that, and you give me the permit number, it would help my department to do some more research, to see exactly what was involved in that permitting. And if the deck was part of it, then that sends it in another direction.
Right.
But it may be- I want to see what you have.
The deck may not be part of it, so then you might want to change your thinking. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. I got it.
Why don't we continue this?
Would you like to ask for a re-
I think, I'd like to ask for a continuance of this matter.
Very well. Until January 9th. Is that Mary Ann?
Good.
Before we do that-
It'll be, it'll-
We should ask. Might be somebody in the audience.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we go there, do anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Come on up to the mic.
Come right up.
I'm Linda Kalman Mack. I'm-
Please pick up the mic, please. Thank you.
Sorry.
There you go. Not just yet.
In a minute.
Is that a seat? Sorry.
And, yes, they have been wonderful neighbors for all of these years. However, well, the thing is, there is a 15-foot setback, and with the proposed design that they have in raising a patio on the roof of their addition, that brings noise level closer to our property and to the bedrooms in the upper section of our house, because we do have a two-story house. So, the upstairs would get the brunt of any, you know, noise from the upper deck. The other thing is, the setback became very clear to us, and we were not even aware how close that deck was until we had our property resurveyed because we're putting in fencing. And at that time, that's when it was brought to our attention by the surveyor, and he said, wow, he goes, "That deck is awfully close to your property line, to my parents." And that's what started the, the whole process of trying to resolve how close this addition is going to be. So, it's not that we are objecting to the addition, it's just objecting to the distance on the property line. We'd like to keep it to the actual zoning of 15 feet.
Thank you.
So, are you requesting an extension?
I thought I did, yes.
Continuation to what?
January 9th. I would like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for a continuance until January 9th in his written finding.
2019.
2019.
There you go. All in favor?
Give a second. Aye.
Like I said, whatever you have records of, you know, please give it to me that we can see what's in place. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Quilty, are you originally from Natick?
No, I'm relative.
I know Dennis Quilty from Natick.
Really? Unbelievable. Jerry is a local man. Surprised. It's a town in Ireland, Quilty, and it's on the Seagull. It fills up the dereliction of the name, it's up on the woods. No way, no way in the town has it made.
Well, Quilty is a big name in the town of Natick, in case you wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 9th. All right, let's see. What else do we have?
Move to a closer.
Okay, let's approve some minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the-
If you want to, go ask.
They're optioned.
It'll be another meeting. We continue.
Will she get a notice again, or no?
No. Do you get a second notice if you continue?
No. Yeah, you won't get another notice.
Okay. Lock the date.
Jim's trying to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 28, 2018, minute meeting minutes.
I wasn't here.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was here, but I left early.
Hey, Brad, you're up.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.